Good afternoon and welcome back. First week of school, second week of school, it's good to see everyone. Now we will call the August eleventh, twenty twenty five Board Meeting to Order. Mr. Wilborn, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair, representing Educational District One, we have Ms. Katie Howard.
Present.
Representing Educational District Two, we have Ms. Aretha Baldwin.
Present.
Representing Educational Three, we have Dr. Ken Zeph.
Present.
Representing Educational District Four and Board Vice Chair, Ms. Jennifer McDonald.
Present.
Representing Educational District Five and Board Chair, Ms. Erica Mitchell.
Present.
Representing Educational District Six, Mr. Tolton Pace.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat Seven, Mr. Alpha Shibi Brooks.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat Eight, Ms. Cynthia Briscoe Brown.
Present.
Representing Educational District at Large Seat Nine, Ms. Jessica Johnson.
Present.
Also present, we have Superintendent Dr. Brian Johnson and Madam General Counsel Nina Guetta. Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Wilborn. I would now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the June second, twenty twenty five Board Meeting and the July seventh, twenty twenty five Special Call Board Meeting. I have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Cynthia Briscoe Brown.
Second.
Seconded by Tolton Pace. Is all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for August eleventh, twenty twenty five Board Meeting?
So moved.
Moved, properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Tolton Pace, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Dr. Johnson, would you please bring the work session items?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as you said to everybody, welcome back. This afternoon, we have five presentations that are each directly aligned to the strategic plan. First, we'll have a review of the Georgia Milestone results that we'll talk about grades three through eight. Dr. Kathy Howe, the Chief Performance Officer, will go through those. Our second presentation is aligned to our strategic plan focus area. We are strengthening our instructional core, which Dr. Butler will go through, Chief of Teaching and Learning. Our third presentation is aligned with strategic plan focus, our strength as our team, which Ms. Felicia Lester, interim Chief Human Resource Officer, and Mr. Tommy Usher will go through. And a bit of an inside joke, I think Mr. Usher is going to help Dr. Butler as well. But the fourth presentation will be our focus on our system is efficient and effective, and Dr. Lisa Bracken will tell us about all of our financials. And then Dr. Ken Bradshaw, Deputy Superintendent of Operational Efficiency, will give us an update on facilities, comprehensive facilities planning. We look forward to engaging in thoughtful discussions around each of these areas. As we look at kind of the strategy update, just to level set, as Dr. Howe is ready to come up, you know, we have implemented a new or in the process of implementing a new strategic plan. Let me go to the next slide. And I should start by highlighting, yep, awesome. I should start by highlighting, you've got each of these areas that are within the discussion. Let me go to the next slide. The start of school, we started off strong. Many of you had a chance to, all of you had a chance to join in some visit. Several of you had a chance to join in multiple. And I will point out, Cynthia Briscoe Brown joined me on all. On every, on every visit.
It was my pleasure.
And so twenty six, twenty six schools, really, really awesome to see the work that schools are doing, frankly speaking, and, you know, a lot of routines and structures being established just as far as the day to day, but also to see instruction taking place in many places. Day one, definitely by day two, we saw really meaningful instruction, which was greatly appreciated. Know the teachers and leaders and staff have done a tremendous job. Buildings looked really good. I say really, really openly to parents and stakeholders and the public, thank you for your grace and patience with us. Anytime you're operating at scale as we are, you're going to have some bus route issues and other things that come up, but hopefully as the days go ahead, those will dissipate. But all in all, really a tremendous start. We got to start day one at the bus depot and really, really excited to see our bus drivers and not just our bus drivers, but again, all the staff and the work that's done. So thank you for a really strong start, and we're excited about, about the week two. Next slide. So as we think about kind of the flow of what you'll get every board meeting, you'll obviously have a multitude of updates that'll be kind of cross cutting across the strategic plan. You'll see probably one on the community believer side, which really deals with not just our community, but also operational components. And then you'll see one on the right side that deals with our true focus, which is the teaching and learning and the support of our, of our students. And so we're excited to start that today and think you'll see the connectivity as we, as we run through it. The other thing I would mention is that as we look at key performance indicators, we'll talk about where we are in the targets, but we'll also talk about the strategies and the next steps that each department is looking at or each area or function is looking at as they continue to move this work forward. Go to the next slide, and I may be done. Yeah, this is the layout really of our, of what we've proposed, the kind of flow for the calendar and what you can expect in regards to presentations that will cover the entire strategic plan in a calendar year, and then we'll come back and do it again. This, to be abundantly clear, there may be a moment or two where either the board or administratively we deem appropriate to work in another, an additional presentation, but at minimum, you'll, you'll get this and, and continue to be updated and apprised around our progress as a district and the work that has been done. I do want to take a moment, Travis and the entire team that works in strategy have done a ton of work, engaging and really trying to make sure. He's got a small whiteboard, I've got a bunch of little whiteboards, and I often go into his office and jot an idea in the bottom right corner, I did it today. And, and then somehow it materializes. So appreciate the work that everybody has done in getting us to this point and really excited about, about what's next. So, Dr. Howe, are you ready? Awesome. So you'll kind of see the flow, we'll jump in with her, then we'll move to teaching and learning, which dovetails nicely into articulating some work and, and next steps. And then we'll talk about our people who power the, the organization, and we'll talk about how we're going to fund all that. And then we'll end by talking about just the reality of where we are from a facility standpoint. So, Dr. Howe.
I think it is now. Yes, I think I got it. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. As Dr. Johnson stated, I'm going to share some newly released milestone data that, there we go, that informs our work and our progress around these three strategic plan goals that you see on the slide. But first, I want to, I want to begin by thanking all of our teachers and building level principals and other leaders whose hard work really allows me to stand here today and share this good news and the progress that you see displayed on the, on the slide. So rather than read through each of these, what I want to do in the next couple of slides is take you through really what each of these bullet points mean, slide by slide. So I'll be referring back to them rather than reading them slide by slide. So I want to start with the first bullet point that talks about the progress that we made in four of the four end of, end of grade exams for each of the content areas. So this slide visually shows you the progress that was made. Across this, you'll see that there's healthy gains made in, in math and science, and we did make increases as well in ELA and social studies. And I just want to add, the second bullet had talked about all subgroups making proficiency gains in math and science. And the proficiencies are the subgroups are students with disability, English learners, economically disadvantaged, and each of the racial and ethnic subgroups. So all of those that combined to make up all students. So really noting that there were gains in both math and science in every single subgroup, that is what contributes or is one of the reasons that contribute to the healthy gains in math and science. So all really meaning all students and contributing to that overall district gain. This next slide shows the year over year gains by subject for all students for three through eight for each of the end of grades, and it compares those year over year gains that APS has made and compares that to the year over year gains that the state has made. And so you'll see great news that we made progress in all four of those areas year over year, and the state is showing a decrease in ELA. And so thinking about this, the, the bullet, the bullet point that talked about the district making year over year proficiency gains compared to the state in thirteen out of fourteen of the end of grades for ELA, math and science. We missed being able to say that we made fourteen out of fourteen because we saw a slight decrease in sixth grade, sixth grade mathematics, but, but we went back zero point one percent. But however, the totality of looking at a grade by grade, year over year increase for APS, that tells us that we're headed in the right direction in order to close the gap that we have with the state. And this slide is visually shows us the path that we're on across the next five years to achieve the twenty thirty goal of all students at third grade for ELA, fifty, achieving fifty four point nine percent proficient or greater. So I just want you to take a minute and, and look at that, and look where we are. If you consider this a baseline year in twenty twenty five, the state and APS are at the same amount of proficient and higher, thirty four point nine percent. We have closed the gap with the state at third grade ELA reading. Just take a minute and think that in. Because our goal is we want to close the gap in all subject areas and meet it or beat it. And so we're off to a good start. And not only do we want to close the gap with the state, we want to outperform as other districts are doing. So this slide shows, this slide shows the year over year gains compared to other metro districts, including Marietta City, compared to the state year over year gains. So like Marietta City, our year over year gains for all students in three through eight ELA were greater than the state, and for all students in grade three, although our ELA decrease was less, less, although we had a decrease in third grade ELA, it was less than the decrease experienced across the state. And so shifting to math, this slide shows us where we are today at thirty five point eight percent at math proficient and above, and where we're headed in the next five years to achieve the twenty thirty milestone or achieve our goal of fifty, fifty five point eight percent proficient or higher by twenty thirty. And again, this is another look at APS compared to other metros in the district, including Marietta City, for all students in math, three through eight, as well as for eighth grade math. And of note on this slide is you'll notice that APS more than doubled our year over year increase compared to the state, year over year changes in both three through eight all students and eighth grade math. And so we really should celebrate this accomplishment too, because not only is it difficult to achieve those types of gains in a year over year, it's also going to be hard to replicate. So next year's may not be quite as large, but the goal remains to stay focused on making the step five. the step-by-step growth on our path to 2030. So that is another, quite, quite an accomplishment in math. And so this concludes my update and I want to end by calling your attention to this highlight again, and most specifically to the fourth bullet. So not only did we close the gap in third grade ELA, we have returned to pre-pandemic levels for math in grades three through eight. And we're, we're sustaining a four-year improvement trend. So really it's important to applaud the teachers and the building leaders and we, although we know more work remains, we should feel good knowing that we're on the right path and that is our goal to sustain, sustain these gains. So with that, I want to hand it off to my colleague. Yes?
Questions, I'm sure they're questions.
Yep, before I hand off.
Thank you for your presentation. We'll be taking questions now. I'm gonna start from this end. Board member Howard, board member Zeph. Oh, let me, let me start back. Board member Howard, Baldwin and Zeph.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much for giving us an overview. I mean, lots to highlight, lots to celebrate and of course echo your appreciation, deep appreciation for the people on the ground doing this work. And I know this is an overview and highlights and of course I'm looking forward to digging more into the subgroup data which you referenced, particularly for our black students, economically disadvantaged students, those who have historically definitely needed some additional support based on what we've been seeing and making sure that we are laser focused on that. And then looking at eighth grade math, I mean, you called that out and going back to what I was just saying and Dr. Johnson, you talk about this a lot, making sure we're focusing on the students who've been struggling the most because that will definitely show tremendous gains. And we understand that it takes time too, but just definitely wanting to make sure we, we talk about that constantly and in our communities. Eighth grade math, exciting to see that huge gain there. And I think this kind of ties into probably the next presentation so we can address it then if, if better, but really wanting to know what we're doing differently, why we had those increases, which are excellent, especially since we've had some shifts in middle school math and teaching and learning. So if there's anything you can share right now that we've seen working really well that we want to continue, takeaways, and then yeah, we can talk about it in the next presentation as well, if easier.
Perfect. I, I know that Chiefs Butler and Usher are going to talk about specifically what's going on at the school level and what's going on district level support relative to curriculum and things that support these changes. I just would underscore what I had offered from a data perspective, when you're able in math and science to show year-over-year increases for every single subgroup, that is all students, you're going to see an increase. And so that, if that continues, you're going to continue to see movement. And so I'll defer to them when they come up to speak more specifically about, because that was, yeah, wow, what's going on. I will offer, I know I said to Dr. Johnson, these are incredible gains. It's hard to achieve just from what I know, working in another Atlanta metro district, but also from what I've seen across the country to get gains. And I think the slide, we're keeping good company with Marietta City Schools and Fulton in seeing in particular your question about math. Are, we're, we're not as, we don't have as many as proficient and higher as Marietta City Schools, but we are keeping pace with all students three through eight in that year-over-year gain, which is encouraging.
And I would just add, Board member Howard, you're going to hear Dr. Butler speak a little bit to curriculum guides and some professional, just some of that work which undergirds the, the gains that I think you see in that, in that particular space. So it's more to come here when she, when she comes up.
Thank you. I figured that might be the case. Thank you for the overview and looking forward to diving in even deeper. Yeah, thank you.
So my, my curiosity was in the, in the same space as, as Board member Howard, which was understanding what things that we did that drove these changes, specifically yes, in math as well as in science, because I believe science the last time was, it didn't have as much growth and there was concern. So clearly we did something different, so there's curiosities around that. Also, I appreciate that you looked at the subgroup data. There is curiosity around that. We know that averages are just that in average, that there, there are numbers that fall above and there's numbers that fall below. So my curiosity among the subgroups is, do you see any opportunities to push in, any opportunities to share something that may have worked with one group or the other? Not really seeing the information and calling out, I'm, I would be dependent, dependent on you to tell me whether there are any outliers or exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howe. Welcome to the, welcome to the podium. It's great, great to have you here.
Thank you.
It's, look at all these people.
Kind of a rusty start. First time out of the chute, but.
So I appreciate, I appreciate you naming the third grade reading scores and not just grades three through eight together, which is what the state has done. I appreciate you exaggerating because the, you know, the news in third grade reading is not great and especially I don't take, I, I, I would careful us about taking too much confidence in, we're closing the gap with the state when the state lost three and a half points. And so we want to, we want to chase them forward. We don't necessarily want to catch them on the way down. My, my question is, so thank you for, so it's important that we get all news, right? So I appreciate it wasn't this, you know, that you specifically pulled out third grade reading and just to show the averages. So I appreciate that, keep that up. My question is, it kind of builds on Board member Baldwin's question around themes that you see in the third grade reading data. Is there any subgroup or anything that you can share with us at this time? I know the data is relatively hot off the presses, but did a certain subgroup, as, as Board member Baldwin said, the averages tell us, especially in a complicated district like Atlanta Public Schools, anything thematically you want to lift up in the data on third grade reading?
I do want to lift up that there were year-over-year increases in particular grades, grade four, six and seven, but I think that overall three through eight decline, the data tells us to look closely at third grade, fifth grade and eighth grade, is that contributed to that step back. I will say that at third grade, it, the, it was a year-over-year 1.3%, which I don't want to negate any numbers, but to tell us that it, that's still doable too. And I'm confident in what I know that's going on in teaching and learning with curriculum guides, instructional framework, with the district continuing the work around the science of reading and other initiatives that are, that are in place, that that is a doable course correction. I also want to lift up in ELA, although there were not every subgroup, there are bright spots in multiracial Hispanic subgroups. And so it informs us that work, we need to look more closely at those other groups to see how we can offer support. So those numbers all change in the right direction for third grade and for all three through eight.
Yeah, I think the, I would just add, I don't, I don't, there's, you know, and again, curse review, there's no, there's nothing that stands out from the standpoint of like a specific subgroup or area that, that's like, oh my gosh, this fell off. I mean, when you look across the state at a three and a half percent decrease, there's obviously reason for pause. I, I, I do believe though that there are, there are some, there are some bright spots that we can hold up. And so I use, you know, Hollis as a, as an example, I believe Hutchinson was another one, like I can go, kind of go down the list. We had a handful of, of schools that, you know, really beat the odds, so to speak. And so, you know, as we go forth, next couple of weeks, really peeking into what, what they, what they've done. One of the things the state has done and, you know, again, here nor there, one of the things the state has done is they led before they dropped the data with, you know, the focus around the literacy coaches that were in the schools in a targeted way, et cetera, et cetera. I do believe that's a good practice for us to lean in and, and look at, but something's off, right? Like something's off across the state because if, if, if our decline was in effect, two and a half times less than the state average, right? And we're a pretty large district and so you pull us out, you have to say, most districts are more significant of a decline than ours. So it's, 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 it's a statewide. And, and look, this happens from your, your evidence business for a little while, sometimes you have a situation, what the first thing I turn to is a misalignment between, you know, standards and what was assessed and what was taught and what was assessed and, you know, kind of the, 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 you know, I don't want to have a question around, but we, we will scrutinize the blueprint and early understanding, you know, all the nuances. So those things are, are to come, but nothing, nothing really jumps off the page as a specific area that's hot, but and there is a statewide opportunity here in, in literacy. I would say the, the fortunate side for us is, you know, it's, it's kind of, you know, I hate to say it felt like a pandemic year, but when you look back in hindsight, you want to reduce as much of that erosion as possible. And so it looks like when you compare us to, you know, the immediate counterparts that you look at, we did a pretty decent job of that and, and now is the time to really hit the accelerator and figure out how to, how to move things forward.
Down here, are we going in order? Fulton, do you have? Great. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the, the presentation. Look, as someone who shows up in a classroom every day, I know how challenging academic strides are. I think many times for folks from the outside looking into education, you know, you're like, why aren't we moving 15, 20, 30, 40 points like per year? And, and the reality of it is, you know, when you're making like a five-point stride, that's like a monumental stride in the academic world. And the truth is, is, you know, to get to where we want to be is, is going to require commitment on all of our behalf. I'm grateful to see that, that generally we are headed in the right direction. I, I will be honest that even in seeing the state, you know, having a, a two and a half point backslide and us making a half a point uptick in ELA, you know, while we can say we, we eroded less, the truth is, is like, it's so hard to be satisfied with the fact that, you know, 65% of our kids are not reading proficiently. And, and for me, that I don't, I think it's, it's just hard for any of us to really like backslap ourselves about it. I think we all understand like there is so much work to do, but I am grateful to see that we are moving in the right direction. I did have a couple of questions in regards to just some of the choices and data points. For example, I was curious as to if we're going to make the comparison to other metro districts, why we did not include Douglas and Gwinnett?
When we were pulling the, the metro districts, we were, we started with those that actually touch our borders. And so Gwinnett technically isn't touching us.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I, I don't know that you all, I don't, I don't know historically if you all presented all the metro, you know, like the comparative analysis. It's just a glance or a look, really, really the focus and energy is on ourselves, but it's to give a, a peek out to understand contextually. But I think, you know, going forward, if there's great energy around Douglas and Gwinnett, we can absolutely include.
Look, by all means, I, I am for good spirited competition for excellence, right? Like honestly, when we talk about wanting APS to be the best district in the state, the best district in the metro, one of the best urban districts around the country, then look, we got to be head up with everybody who's around us. And I think that gives us an honest opportunity to see exactly where we are. The position we're in right now is we're fighting A to get our kids back, kids who have chosen, families who have chosen to go places outside of our district but live within our city bounds, but also we're fighting to attract families to Atlanta for our schools because of the great public good that our schools are. And so I think the best way to do that is for us to be very honest about where we are across the board throughout the metro, whether they're touching us or just generally in the vicinity so that, you know, we really know where we are. The, the other question that I have is just, or ask rather, is just more visibility on the subgroup data. Now I want to know how black children, black boys, black girls, Hispanic boys, Hispanic girls, ELA kids, excuse me, our, excuse me, English language learners, thank you. It's been a long day. I was at school this morning, sorry. I would love for us to be able to, to see the data because the, the truth is, is the gains will happen most from our kids who are most vulnerable and the kids who have the most need. And so if we're not meeting the mark where we want to be, we need to know that. If we are meeting the mark, we need to know that. If we're flat, we need to know that. But right now, I don't know that. And for me, that's disconcerting to hear conversations about subgroups without seeing subgroup data.
Yeah, so you all will get all the subgroup data. There's no, I will tell you like this, this 7% gain in, in, in math is a byproduct of suburbs moving because the, the gap is so significant between the two. You all will get all that Friday, it was all released. So, so honestly, just going back to even the, the surrounding district, I don't know wheels in here, but Catherine and her team had to scrub, scrub, scrub to be able to pull the other district data because of how it's downloaded. And so we just pulled a handful of districts that were around, but we, we joyfully will provide the surrounding district data as well as subgroup data. That's, that's low hanging.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia? No, Jessica, anyone? That's all right. I think we're done. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. That microphone tricks everyone the first time.
All right, now we'll have, thank you. Thank you, thank you so much, Dr. Howe.
All right, good afternoon, Dr. Johnson and her absence, Board Chair Mitchell, Vice Chair McDonnell and the entire Board of Education. It's good to see you and welcome back to a new school year. We are truly excited and encouraged by the data that Dr. Howe just presented. We understand and know that there's more work to do for sure and we are excited to share with you the work that we started last school year and we will continue that work moving forward to sort of put, sort of like press the accelerator around this work. And so as you know, we have a strategic plan and we're going to focus on, on the area of strengthening our instructional core, looking specifically at how we ensure that our teachers and our leaders have the right instructional material and resources that touch the students in a high quality kind of way. So to begin that conversation, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Butler and then we will come back.
Good afternoon. The three strategies that we are using to address strengthening our instructional core specifically around instructional materials and professional learning deals with looking and making sure that we have strong alignment with the standards in our curriculum guide and the materials that teachers are using to write lessons, ensuring that as we adopt external resources for our teachers, that we have a vetted process and making sure that those materials are high quality. And lastly, a robust professional learning so that that way we're, we're supporting our instructors and our leaders with the resources and with the material. So just to kind of ground us in, what are we, what are we speaking on when we're talking about curriculum materials? We have district level, which the district provide to the schools that, for example, Benchmark HMA, you lived through that last year with us with the curriculum adoption. In terms of our state standards, everything is aligned to the Georgia state standards. And as an example, we have NWA MAP for our assessments. Schools do have the option to purchase supplemental resources in their schools such as STEMScopes and Lexia. Also classroom teachers have, you know, the autonomy to put different books and resources in our classroom libraries and different resources for creating their lesson. plans. So just digging, jumping right into strategy one, the curriculum guide and resources materials. As Chief Usher mentioned, we started this process last year as a part of the Superintendent's 100 Day Plan, um, really just doing our own internal and also partnering with experts on external audits to see what, what curriculum resources are we providing to teachers in terms of our scope and sequence, um, in the way that we are recommending that they deliver. 100 responses from teachers and school-based individuals around what they wanted and desired in a curriculum framework and curriculum scope and sequence. And so what they told us is that they want for the resources to be accessible and easy to use. They want to see differentiation and support for all of their learners in their classrooms. It needs to be aligned to what the state is going to be assessing on. It has to be relevant for our learners and engaging. I've heard, um, that come from the board several times about engagement in the classrooms and that the instruction has to be very clear. So that led us to, um, launching a curriculum hub where all of these resources are housed so that address our accessibility issues. So all of our K-12 core content area resources are launched on the SharePoint Hub. It's our candy site. We have a universal instructional framework, um, which you see here below, um, and is grounded in, um, the Georgia Department of Education framework, but also with some modifications to specific APS students' needs so that, um, shifting out the explore for explicit instruction. So what are our next steps in this work? Is to continue, now that we've launched the resource, to continue, um, adding resources throughout the year and engaging with our stakeholders to provide feedback so that we can, um, update as needed. We're doing deep, deep work in the area of science to redesign that curriculum because that one had a little bit, um, when we did our audit, had a little bit more work than others. So we're needing to deeply focus on that one differently. So we'll do a second relaunch of, of science in the summer. And we want to expand this framework in the design of this for our core subjects to our extended core subjects. Our second strategy, you, you lived this in real time last year in our curriculum adoption for ELA. We want to do this as we, um, move forward with future adoptions, um, in years to come. So we created that, that foundation for curriculum adoption. So the actions that we're taking in real time right now is implementing the curriculum resources that we, um, have purchased. We will continue all year training teachers district wide as well as, um, school base and our leaders. Our next step is to finalize the K-5 pilot, transition to bringing other subject areas and work with our finance partners so that as we want to, um, expand our resources beyond just ELA and have high quality curriculum materials for all subject areas, we know that that costs money. So having a five-year outlook, um, will be to our advantage. Our last strategy is supporting our educators and leaders. A lot of this is grounded from the curriculum and instruction perspective in, um, ensuring that the explicit instruction that we're focused on this year, um, has student engagement, development and, and, um, capacity building with content expertise, content expertise and that there's evidence of student learning throughout. With that, I'm going to turn it over to...
So essentially, as we roll out our new instructional frameworks, our new curriculum guides, and we focus on explicit instruction, there's a lot of cross-functional collaboration and conversation happening with the school's office, the academic office, particularly the Office of Exceptional Ed, so that as we roll out these resources, we're trying to make sure that everyone who touches the school is aware of what's in the resource, how it is aligned to the new state standards in the case of ELA, but also in mathematics and how that looks inside of the classroom. And so when you see job embedded professional, well, job embedded support through leaders, school, for school leaders by the cluster superintendent, what that looks like is a weekly conversation between the EDs on our academic side of the house, talking with our cluster superintendents around for this time of year, what is most appropriate for school leaders and teachers should be implementing on, given where we are in the pacing guide, instructional frameworks, and so on and so forth. They then work together to develop what we might refer to as a look for to go out and support principals and teachers in real time. When we think about the, that support, we also look at that as a monitoring structure to know where we need to lean in more heavily because we know across the divisions what work should be happening when. So when you're in a school, you're able to lay your eyes on it, you know how to then come back and leverage support from our teaching and learning team, the Office of Exceptional Ed, and so on and so forth. Also wanted to just name a few things. Uh, there were some questions earlier around what may have happened differently last year. So a couple of structural things we put in place in response to the data that we were giving. One process that we had not put in place in prior years is this idea of a structured school support protocol where we met with each of our principals to identify for every teacher in that building, what support do you need to move learning forward for our student? There was a targeted plan put together for every school principal in response to the data that they provided us around their needs. And so that's structural training that we had not had before. One of the other things we did was to make sure that the principals had the tools, uh, data tools, workbooks, all the things they need to identify student performance across the year and know how to make in-time, real-time pivots based upon the data that they were receiving. Likewise, as part of our district plan and support that we have to submit to the state, our disproportionately specialists on the exceptional ed side, along with our coordinates on exceptional ed side, they lean in really heavily in those areas of exceptionality to make sure that when they're walking in buildings with their cluster supers and their principals, they're able to then give feedback to the principals and the teacher around what instructional moves make sense for the content that's being taught at that time. So those were a few of the structural things process-wise that we put in place last year that we're looking to go further, expand and deepen, uh, the impact of those structures for this upcoming school. What you see in front of you here is, uh, a spaces wherein we're going to continue our professional learning. The principals meeting, assistant principals meetings are designed to be professional learning sessions for principals and assistant principals. We bring them out of their building so that we can teach them the content around, um, the standards, the new instructional resources that they will be receiving, and more specifically explicit instruction. That is our academic strategy for the year, uh, making sure that principals and school teachers are implementing the components of explicit instruction with clarity, fidelity, and consistency. So the principals meeting, assistant principals meetings, and coaches meetings, all those things will be designed to make sure that there's a through line between all the things that we're offering in terms of our robust curriculum, materials and frameworks that we are laying out for schools. And with that, we will take questions.
All right, we'll start at this end. Jessica, anyone else on this side? Anyone over here?
Thank you both for, oh, sorry. Thank you both for the presentation. Um, just had a, I, hearing a lot of the support around the principals and, and teachers specifically, I think, I'm curious about the role of maybe the instructional coaches and there, there's just been some, some varying levels of support and success that I've seen across the district in that book. Can you speak to what, what supports or what might be changing in terms of their roles?
Yes, the instructional coaches receive monthly support from our district team. Actually, this past, um, January, we did a complete reboot, uh, and a redesign of what that support looks like. So we partnered with TNTP to really not just talk about content and the content that they are supported in their building, but also strategies, like being able to make those real-time decisions. So we, um, in the fall, starting, I think maybe next week or, or the next two weeks, um, we'll bring that back again, but our team will be leading that work. And we also partner with the Rollins Center for additional support with our readers or leaders coaches, and they actually have training, two days worth of training this week. So we'll continue to lean into our instructional coaches because we know that they are the support for, um, teachers, especially when the, the central office can't be there.
Thank you, Katie.
Yes, thank you so much. Basically, you answered all of my questions, like you're reading my mind. Um, really appreciate the examples you all gave of the on-the-ground support and I appreciate Board Member Johnson's question asking about instructional coaches, um, thinking about us having 20 new principals, which is awesome, and how, you know, really supporting everyone and just, you know, there are things that were called out that will cost money and as we need to support those efforts. So you all, um, providing for us and then also the community, what that actually looks like on the ground. I think elementary, middle, and then now I'm thinking high school, like what does that look like in a high school and coming in to support, um, appropriately hold folks accountable, high expectations, but really that continuous support? Can you give us one example of what that might look like in high school? I know I'm spreading it out wide.
So I'll start the response by saying another structural support last year was the tiered service delivery model. And so what we were able to do last year is tier the school based on need of school as identified by the data. So some schools who were fairly identified, primarily their support was from the state. Then those schools underneath that tier of support, we worked together cross-functionally to determine the frequency and the type of support that was provided to our, our, our schools essentially. That work, I want to say, really began with the, well, as part of the school student, the school support model where the principals were able to tell us where they needed the most support. So it looked like the principal telling us at a high school, I need more support in Algebra I versus maybe, uh, college per se. And then the teaching and learning team would get together and design that support, either it was around PL, lesson planning, maybe it was around coaching. So it really just depended upon the support of the need of the school.
And the, the good news is that we are continuing that model of the, of the service delivery model based on school needs. The curriculum and instruction team has already been, um, visiting schools, um, individually as a, as a team. So they, they go to the teams separately, um, but collectively with all core areas to find out what are those principal needs. And the good news is that with the secondary team, since your question is about high school, is that we've added a, a specialist per content area to each of the subjects. So last year, um, we were working with two specialists for social studies, two for science, two for EL, um, I think we have four for ELA, and then two for math. This year, that number, um, for math, science, and social studies has increased to three. So that means we're able to increase our frequency of support to our middle and high schools, um, as a result of adding extra team members.
That's great to hear that. So you just said, never heard a leaf lawler before until now. It's really close. Specialists for science, social studies, and math for high school, and I heard proactive, like going into schools, because of course it's not just schools on the state list that need support. So hearing you all talk about just really practically going in, and that's a huge message I got from this presentation, is a lot of outward push. So, um, and outcomes, student outcomes. So looking forward to seeing how those positions do change outcomes for students or help with obviously supporting, teaching, and learning. So thank you all for the presentation and real-time examples.
And I will just say, you know, I appreciate that you are bringing up the cross-collaboration, that you're talking about the engagement. I think we as a district have tried some things in the past where it felt a little more like where people are deciding on what's going to get used, but the people that are executing aren't in on that dialogue. And we've seen that there's a huge lack of success when that happens. And so this feels a lot more collaborative, a lot more connective tissue. So I appreciate that the chiefs are out there just pulling in everyone, right? Because if the people on the ground don't buy in, they're, then what's the point of the exercise? So I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Oh, Chibi, you're adding?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a late hand. I, I just had one question, uh, and, and it came up to mind just in, in listening. I was curious about like how our investment and the readers or leaders that we made, a $12 million investment a year ago, how has that made an impact, uh, on learning and achievement here? How, how are we realizing the impact of that investment today?
From what we, we, every school, every elementary school has a readers or leaders coach. That was part of the, a large part of the investment was in personnel and in stipends. So close to 7 million was in personnel, was, was in giving every elementary school a coach. And last year, we met the 100% goal of all teachers in elementary school, um, being trained with the state-required Cox Campus Course. We provided a hefty, 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 hefty stipend for completion of that course. So yes, yes, it's so, so that's where, where, um, most of the, the investment went directly to teachers, um, either through their support from their coach or in the, the training. So what we hope is that we banked a year. So all last year, we were training, all last year, we were, um, training teachers as well as coaches in those new roles. So we're hoping that as we go into the fall with all of the new learning, that we can continue that growth, which is why we have partnered with the Rollins Center to just accelerate it more so that it's more practical of what they're doing in schools. You will notice, um, on the approved board, um, budget, that that budget is reduced because we don't need as much for stipends anymore because we've trained all of our teachers, but we are still moving forward with that investment to making sure that our educators have that on-the-ground support because we spent several years teaching reading in a different way. So we want to make sure that they have daily support in the science of reading.
Thank you for explaining that. I guess my only follow-up question is, 100% were trained by when of, I think you said last year?
The, the board goal, or I'm sorry, the state goal, we had to have all teachers trained by June 30th and that had to be certified in the state portal.
And we, but ours were trained by when, I guess is what I'm trying to...
Yes.
By when?
June 30th.
June 30th, okay, I'm sorry. I heard the, sorry, teacher brain, I'm tired. It's the beginning of the school year, man. You just, woo, yes. Um, thank you. So it happened in June, correct? Thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, sir. I think we're done.
Just, just one thing I want to lift, uh, thank y'all. Probably a perfect transition to Ms. Lester as she comes up. As we, we, we're talking about 20 new principals, um, I want to be clear that, um, because of the recruitment, because of the compensation, because of the support, we were able to hire, um, a lot of seasoned principals. So of the 20 principals, there's 79 years of principal experience in that, in that group. There are only four new principals to the field, of the four new principals to the field, two are inter, were interims or are interims or had been in the building. And so, um, again, you know, we, we, and we'll get to this, uh, data point, but also hopefully be able to back it up with data. As you, as you get a more experienced leader, you know, the, the, the hope and expectation would be they're able to take off and sprint. And, and I'll, I'll say, having gone in buildings, uh, you know, some buildings, you can, you can see that. You can see principals that, uh, first thing they do is like they're tearing apart the master schedule, you know, they're not trying to figure, that somebody has really got confidence. And I'm, and I'm thinking about one right now, Tharrell High School was one, and Tharrell did, did really well last year, and I think they're going to continue to, to grow, but that principal's torn, you know, tore apart the master schedule three, three or four times, um, before the, you know, the year got started. You, you gotta, you gotta have some chops to want to go in and do that, uh, just speaking from experience. And so like, you know, because, because those are conversations you gotta have with teachers. And like, that's the hardest part. Like, you know, and, and, and then it's just the complexity of, of, of figuring that out. And so, um, you know, I, I, I think what we're going to see is, um, you know, a, and a, a, the outcome should, should follow that is the, is the hope and expectation. So with that, the talent piece and the, and the, and the support and resources, we'll talk about human, human resources. Ms. Lester?
Well, good afternoon, Board Chair, Vice Board Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Johnson, colleagues and members of the APS community. I am Felicia Lester, Interim Chief Human Resource Officer for Atlanta Public Schools. This afternoon, I'll walk you through how our HR talent strategy is really our student strategy, focused on increasing the concentration of highly effective teachers and leaders in every school, every day, because that's what our students deserve. You will hear throughout tonight's meeting about APS core priorities, strengthening our instructional core, caring for every child, sparking curiosity and ensuring operational excellence. But we know- But we know none of this is, this happens without people. Under the priority, our strength is our team. HR is focused on three areas. This afternoon, I will focus on the first of the three, increasing the concentration of highly effective teachers and leaders. HR will be back in future board meetings to share updates on work to strengthen engagement and retention and to grow and promote exceptional talent across the district. Before we get into strategy, let's ground ourselves in why. Student achievement, that's our North Star. End of great results show that when we invest in attracting, developing, and retaining great educators, student outcomes improve. Every single percentage point here represents more students on track for long-term success. Our role in HR is to make sure every child has access to highly effective teachers and leaders every single day. The Wallace Foundation tells us that school leadership is second only to teaching and its impact on learning. In APS, this is not just a finding, it's a call to action. Our HR work is designed to ensure every student benefits from great teaching paired with strong visionary leadership. We are being deliberate in how we recruit, develop, and retain the people who have the greatest impact on student success. Our metrics are clear and bold because our students deserve nothing less. Today, 84% of our APS teachers have more than three years of experience. Our goal is 85.2% by the end of this year and 90% by 2030. Our teacher retention rate is 85%. We're aiming for 86% this year and 90% by 2030. Stability in classroom means stronger relationships, deeper learning, and better outcomes. And in compensation, APS leads Metro Atlanta with an average teacher salary of $88,840. We're on track to reach $91,072 by 2026 and $100,000 by 2030, in align with our superintendent's vision. We're executing two core strategies to increase the concentration of highly effective teachers and leaders. One, a focus on recruitment, selection, and development to strengthen every phase of the educator lifecycle. And two, a total reward strategy that goes beyond salary and deeply into the value proposition offered by our district to every employee who calls APS their work home. Our first strategic, our first strategy, strategic recruitment, selection, and development. We are building smarter systems for hiring, developing, and positioning talent, especially in schools where our students need the most experienced educators and more stable leadership. Here's how we bring this strategy to life. We use data-driven recruitment to identify and select the strongest candidates. We invest in continuous development so educators grow their impact over time. We provide targeted school support to schools with the greatest needs, and we align talent decisions closely with instructional practice. The results, the results from our recruitment, selection, and development strategies show meaningful progress and highlights where we still have work to do. We fill 99% of our teacher vacancies by day one. That's over 450 positions, including nearly 200 educators new to APS. This means our students start the year with qualified teachers in place from the very first day, minimizing disruption to learning. We strengthen our candidate screening process to ensure quality, and we revamp our principal selection process to be more rigorous, transparent, and aligned to our leadership priorities, raising the bar for school leadership across the district. Our leadership pipeline is strong. 53% of our assistant principals and 60% of principals were promoted from within, demonstrating that we're developing talent and creating career pathways for our top performers. We're also investing in educator growth. 325 teachers advanced their careers this year through endorsements and credentialing opportunities, increasing their capacity to meet student needs. And for our highest needs schools, those with state designations, we implemented custom recruitment, selection, and development strategies. This targeted support strengthens instructional teams where stability and experience matters most. I will step aside and allow Mr. Uster to talk about the development from the school, Division of Schools.
So within the Division of Schools, we have identified a year-long professional learning series for our principals, cluster superintendents, and our assistant principals to make sure that there's a through line once again between the quality of learning that's happening among that group and the type of work we're looking to see in schools. And so the professional learning series is grounded in instructional leadership, but there are components that talk and teach principals, clusters, and APs through managing change and building high-quality, effective leadership teams and all the different components that are needed to really drive and accelerate learning inside of schools. Additionally, I mentioned a little bit earlier around how we're leveraging our principals' meetings, AP meetings. Those are development opportunities as well. So whereas the professional learning series is really around leadership in and of itself. The principal meetings are around instructional leadership and the content of instruction and instructional resources. So we're marrying the two together so that throughout the year, our principals are learning how to lead, but then also how to focus their daily leadership practices around instruction.
The growth in experienced teachers is one of the strongest signs our recruitment and development strategies are working. In school year 2324, 61 of our new hires had more than three years of teaching experience. In school year 2425, we significantly improved the metric to 81%, a 20 percentage point increase in just one year. Preliminary data shows we're on track to meet or exceed this benchmark again, ensuring a majority of our new teachers are ready to deliver high-quality instruction from day one. District-wide, we've grown from 79% to 84% of teachers with more than three years of experience in the last two years. That level of stability and expertise is critical to, to drive student success. The map you see shows where those experienced teachers are. We are proud of the strong pockets of expertise, but it also makes clear there's more work to do to ensure equitable schools access in every school. Our next steps. We will continue to tier by performance, staffing, and student needs, using data to target recruitment, selection, and development strategies for our state-designated schools and for all schools. We will increase the reach of experienced educators by focusing on recruitment and hiring efforts on these high-need schools, ensuring strong and stable instructional teams where they are needed most. And by January 2026, we will launch APS is Able, the APS Academy for Building Leaders in Education, our succession planning engine for developing teacher leaders, assistant principals, and principals who are ready to step into leadership roles across the district. Our strategy two is a focus on competitive total rewards to attract and retain high-performing talent. Our four levels for total rewards, we will continue to maintain competitive pay to keep APS leading the market, broaden the narrative so employees see the full value of working at APS beyond just salary, align professional learn to each school's specific needs grounded by data, empower schools to create additional earning opportunities tied to local priorities and skills that impact student achievement. We will prioritize competitive-based pay over one-time incentives and stipends. We will partner with our communication teams to launch an integrated marketing campaign that highlights salary, benefits, growth, and development. We will align professional learning opportunities to student needs. For an example, if there's an MTSS endorsement in high behavior needs schools or where we see special ed credentialists with IEP caseloads or subgroups in those areas. We will give schools leaders flexibility to offer stipends for supplemental duties that align with their priorities and contribute to student achievement. Just quickly, some of our bright spots. Again, we are leading Metro Atlanta in teacher compensation with base salaries from $61,000 to $127, and that average of $88,840. Yes, we're on track for the $91,000 average this year in 100 by 2030. Last school year, we invested in target development for over 1,000 teachers, supporting to include fully funded master's degrees in those critical areas, endorsements, certification prep, mentorships, and micro-credentialing. We're proud to share that bus drivers, custodians, pair professional crossing guards also received a 10% pay increase, made possible through board approval and reflection of our total rewards commitment to all APS employees. Our next compensation study is scheduled for 2028 to ensure our pay and benefits remain aligned with our market and talent priority. Finally, because transparency matters, the QR code and link at the bottom of the slide takes you directly to APS salary information, compensation information, a resource for our community candidates, employees to see exactly how we value and invest in our staff. In the months ahead, we will continue to evaluate the impact of recent changes, including the removal of new hire incentives, and you'll begin to see our new marketing campaign by November. This is how we build culture where both our students and employees thrive. In closing, I'll close where I started. This work is about one thing, which is the main thing, student success. Early investments we make in compensation, every investment we make in compensation, retention, development, and leadership is aimed at ensuring every APS student has the teaching and leadership they deserve. We're proud of our progress, we're clear on the strategy, and we're committed to making APS the preferred district for top educators. Thank you.
Lester, you got a hand.
We'll start down here, Board Member Howard.
Thank you. That was definitely full of passion and focus, which is exactly what we want. And everyone has had that today, too. And thank you, Dr. Johnson, for mentioning and reinforcing the experience of our 20. Maybe new in that position. I certainly don't want to take away. They're not.
Absolutely.
We're stealing from Douglas and Gwinnett and, and all the metros.
I just, I want to make it clear, just, you know, coming to the fold and the support in their new roles. So I love, I think it's slide 13, competitive total reward strategy to attract and retain high-performing talent. Excited about us moving towards that $100,000 goal by 2030, but that is about retaining and attracting the best and the right people for our students. That is not about just paying people more.
Absolutely.
So we all talk about that and the actions behind it. And when we're talking about additional professional development, additional degrees, how are we going to be tracking that with data around our students' needs? Because if we're investing, as we should in our staff, we want to make sure it's tied to the needs of our students in APS. How are we doing that differently as we move forward?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're adding to the fold, I heard it mentioned several times, is really looking at schools subgroup data. Historically, we've looked at retention, we've looked at turnover rates, we've looked at all of those things. So we're definitely adding in that subgroup data and where is the, where is the support needed most? And so we have a process in which we call the Talent Review that really looks at your, your performance and your leadership growth. And so when we talk to principals about where do we invest these funds, we're looking for people that overall, when you look at their, their performance and holistically, not just their, their growth, you're also looking at their walkthrough data. You're looking at their propensity for leadership. This is where we want to invest. So there's a separation between those that need, we need to invest in their pedagogy versus those that we can leverage and provide more investment.
Thank you for that because we know that will, that will cost an additional amount, too.
Absolutely.
100% about supporting that, but want to make sure it's really tied to the needs of our students. So look forward to updates as that work continues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Lester. Wonderful way to start.
Phew, thank you.
You might not get applause every single time, so like just internalize this.
I'll take this one.
You're gonna want to bank this if you can. Can you pull up slide, oh, it's 42. No, this is not, I'm excited for you. It's the one with the, the heat map, yeah. So if you, so green is, is experience and yellow is inexperienced, is the average, the average experience rate of teachers in those schools? Each school, each dot is a school. Am I reading this right?
Yes, those are our schools.
Right, each dot is a school and the color is the average experience at that school. So if we were to superimpose a performance chart on that, we'd probably see some, some rough correlation, right? And we know experience isn't, isn't everything, but we also know inexperience isn't, isn't, isn't the answer either. And so I appreciate that, that you've lifted up on your, if you go one more slide, that you lift up your second strategy. No, go that one there. Your second one, close experience educator distribution gap. I would encourage you to be bold, that this board, I think, will get excited about. So now we built the infrastructure to recruit teachers, to bring teachers in. How about placement? And that's something that I think is the next chapter here. It's the next, you gotta get, you gotta get the pool rich, you gotta get the pool deep. And then you gotta place our best and brightest. I think too often, if we just let the system run on its own, that the best and brightest and most skilled and most talented will always find their way into the schools with kids that are traditionally under-resourced. And so if we can, so as we think about your strategies here, as you know, September 2025, that's coming up quick. Might not get it done by then. So, you know, this is going to be a long-term project, but, but be bold, be innovative here because I think we'll, we'll be right there with you.
Thank you. Board Member Payson and Board Member Brooks and Board Member Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was gonna say, yep, Ken, Ken got him right in there. So thank you, Ken. I was gonna echo that sentiment as well, just as we think through history about principal selection of talent at their particular school. If we can identify, as I know you all have been doing, best practices in, in those hiring practices of principals where we see success at certain schools, how can we translate that, replicate that in other places and borrow from that to ensure, to Ken's point, that we're getting what we need in the places where the gaps are? So thank you for, for paying attention to that. Wanted to also just give you a quick shout-out. I had a hashtag I wrote down from Lawson to Lester. And so just, welcome, congrats, amazing job. And I must note, of course, that you had experience as an Astro leader at Douglas High School. So just, you know, just, just had to throw that out there for a moment.
Absolutely.
Nothing like the black and gold. So thank you for bringing that to CLF. 225 certified indeed. So really just wanted to highlight and give kudos on some things. Thank you for letting me crash New Employee Orientation NEO. Amazing opportunity there to, to witness, to shake some hands, and to see exactly what you shared, that majority of the folks who were in the room that were teachers were experienced teachers. And so was excited to see that and to be able to witness that up close and personal. Secondly, wanted to say thank you for highlighting the internal recruitment and promotion of folks who are in the district. I wrote down like yesteryear. That's something that we used to do on a regular many, many years ago, probably when I was even a youngster in elementary school in APS. And so excited to see that return to kind of its, its fervor, if you will. So really excited to reward talent that's in-house. Quoted what you wrote, our leadership talent pipeline is strong. Really excited to, to continue that, that model, that mantra, have that be a part of who we are and what we do. And then wanted to give kudos on Able that you mentioned as well, so that Academy for Building Leaders in Education. Really excited about that. And as Ken mentioned, you know, I think we're a board that supports that kind of bold, audacious leadership and training and investment for our, for our family here. And then last, but certainly not least, non-salary benefits. I wrote yes to that, absolutely. Oftentimes, it is the intangibles, right? The non-compensatory things that helps to keep talent in-house and also helps to attract talent as well. I'm grateful, been in some conversations to bring more of that to our educators and to our leaders in the district. So thank you for focusing on that. Keep that going. Excited to see that. And if there's anything that we can do to help in terms of just making connections to partners that can bring some of those non-compensatory benefits from a salary perspective to the district, definitely don't hesitate to reach out.
I was processing. That was good. All right. Thank you so much for the presentation and for, you guys really went in and pulled out some things that I felt were very much worthy to be highlighted. I think my colleagues did a real good job at notating some of the things that really matter. For me personally, look, 85% retention, 84% of our educators have three-plus years' experience. Your APs principals coming predominantly from within the district. With all pride, I love sharing at the beginning of the school year, APS's salary. It compares in the other Metro Atlanta districts and it tends to go viral every single time. And so we're doing something right. and it tends to go viral every single time. And so we're doing something right. I will say this, too, you know, it's no wonder that we pull some of the best talent. Teaching in a neighboring district, I think some of my best colleagues from my school are now APS employees. Okay, we clap for that, I guess. But, but the truth of the matter is, here I am, a 10-year teacher in a neighboring district, and every single teacher in APS makes more than I do. So what we're doing, I want to be said, is actually, I think, pushing other metro Atlanta districts to be more competitive. It's, it's helping educators in other districts have the conversation around compensation, be front and center at their boards. So I encourage us to keep it up, because we're leading from the front, and this is what it looks like. So I'm just grateful to be a part of this thing with you all. The comment came up about placement. So I just have to be transparent, just as, as an educator. That's a touchy conversation, right? We're fully aware that we are employees of the district or of the county, wherever it is that we're working, but that's our school, right? And so when we start talking about potentially just kind of moving teachers from one school to another school, and I would caution us to, to not be disruptive of school communities, because when you start talking like that, for me, if I was told that I'm getting placed in another school, I quit. So, you know, I think that's something to, to think about and to consider. That is not a word to throw around loosely for educators. Thank you.
Just, just, I actually want to thread the needle of both comments, as somebody that's coming in new. And I won't do it from data, I'll do it from like story, because I think personal, I was getting ready to say something that didn't sound good while HR stuff, I was gonna say personal touch, then I caught myself, because that's not what I, not where I want to go. But, 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 but being in sync with people, so, so I sat down and had our chicken and waffles in one of our cafeterias in the district to be left unnamed. And set across from a teacher, this particular teacher happened to work at two districts before coming back to APS. She never left, she was a, she was a student that graduated from APS. And, and so, long story short, she spent a good portion of her teaching career in, in other districts, never taught in APS. And, and I was talking to her, I was asking her, what, what brought you back? And she said, I wanted to be home. Nobody understands Atlanta public schools. And this is a school that you would anticipate is on the cusp, on the fringe of the list. So here's my point, I think we're reaching a point where the draw to APS will continue to get stronger. As that draw gets stronger, you know, the 20 percentage point increase in the number of teachers, we're going from 61 to 81% of teachers having three or more years of experience at a first year at APS is, is significant. The other side of the equation, though, is, you know, the theory of action here is that you, you, you hire more talented folks and you move students forward at a, at a, at a, at a more intentional pace, and that has to be the, the goal. So as much energy, I think we're gonna see, when you look at the data, higher and higher, we kind of buck some of the trend when it comes to a little bit higher levels of concentration of experienced teachers, and frankly, for that matter, leaders in some of these places and spaces where you wouldn't anticipate seeing them. But our outcomes, right, need to, need to align. So that's where the opportunity is. High level, high, high levels of support, right? But, but high expectations really as well, and we're gonna support the two things in, in sync together, right? So that's, that's where a lot of the work is, so, so we'll continue, you know, as I said earlier, this is a, a build-out. We'll continue to, to, to look at that heat map and the evolution of that heat map, and whether it's outcomes, whether it's, you know, years of experience. I'll also say this to counter, I've been a principal and a teacher, you know, like, I've seen some, some first-year teachers that are absolutely incredible. And so we want to be mindful about, you know, we want this to be a district of destination for, for, for all. So, so thank you, Ms. Lester. I think there's a, a thread of the two things that can move us forward.
Thank you.
Alright, so now we're gonna talk about how we can pay for all that.
Dr. Bracken? Alrighty. Good afternoon, Board Chair Mitchell, members of the board, Dr. Johnson. Today I'll be presenting three topics related to finance, this is in alignment with our strategic plan. Our system is efficient and effective, we're going to be leveraging data to drive strategic financial investments. Today I'll present for, the fourth quarter financials for student activity recounts for FY25. I'll provide an update on the millage process and the property tax timeline. I'll discuss the need for budget adjustments and the subsequent budgetary impacts for FY26. As a part of that, I'll be joined by Aon for a discussion of our pension obligations. And as a reminder, I will not be presenting financials for this month as we transition from FY25 to FY26. I will bring the year-end financials for FY25 and the July through August financials for '26, the October board meeting. First, I'll wrap up FY25 with a summary of the fourth quarter student activity funds. Schools collect, schools collected 6.05 million in activity funds and spent about 5.77 million. Compared to June of FY24, revenue is up 0.76 million or 14%. Expenditures are up 0.4 million or 7%. This is due to an increase in collections for junior and senior fees, athletic fees, and other extracurricular activities. The detailed report can be found in Agenda Item 9.3. Today we will ask you to take action on a resolution to set the FY26 millage rate at 20.5 mils. This is the same millage rate we had since FY2022. Because our rollback rate is actually lower than the current millage rate, we're not required to hold public hearings to set this rate. The rollback rate is, is the property tax rate that would bring in the same amount of revenue as the previous year, and it's down this year because of lower-than-anticipated commercial values. I'll discuss that in more detail. We have several budget adjustments, the first is to decrease the local revenue by 22 million in alignment with the lower-than-anticipated property values. The next four reflect adjustments to the actual award amount for our CTA grants, and all adjustments affect both revenue and expenditures. Details for these adjustments can be found in Agenda Item 6.1. Agenda Item 9.2 includes a detailed information report for special revenue adjustments less than $1 million. The next few slides will dig deeper into the need for the $22 million, million, local revenue budget adjustment. This is caused primarily because of the difference between the anticipated and actual Fulton County Property Digest, specifically commercial values. We anticipated an increase of 5% on residential and commercial with an additional increase related to the closing of the Atlantic Station TAD. However, actual values came in much lower at less than 3%, with commercial values actually going negative or decreasing. After extensive research from the team, we've identified three areas that negatively impact the commercial values. By far, the greatest is appeals. This year APS will lose nearly $31 million due to appeals and commercial values. Abatements or the ability Development Authority to defer taxes caused an additional loss of 17.2 million. And less quantifiable is the continued undervaluation of commercial property. Historically, commercial values have increased between 2.2 and 12% in Fulton County. And while we anticipated a cooling from more recent years, seeing an overall decrease in the Fulton County commercial values is alarming, especially as we continue to see increases in residential values and significant increases in both residential and commercial values in those properties located into CAB. For instance, while the Fulton County commercial values is down 0.4%, the CAB is actually up 18%. We do see some cooling across commercial values in the other districts as well, but other metro districts are still experiencing revenue increases in commercial properties of between 1% and 16%. Again, appeals, abatements, and undervaluation of commercial values are seriously impacting our access to revenue streams, which are already limited through our participation with other development initiatives such as TADS. These impacts to revenues occur even as the City of Atlanta has seen, seen increases in building permits issued for construction, which does not align with the decrease in commercial property value. Residential continues to increase and at a faster rate than commercial. This is evidence of what we hear from constituents about the burden of taxes falling disproportionately to residents, and also evidence of why it's so difficult for the district to support additional home state exemptions while we cannot depend on a fully realized commercial digest. A revised multi-year includes much more conservative revenue estimates and shows continued budgetary gaps in the next five years. With additional pressures to the revenue stream and in the current and out years, we're proposing a series of potential expenditure adjustments that will address not only the current year's budgetary pressures, but will also reposition us going forward with a more secure and stable budgetary outlook. Some potential strategies to close the budget gap created by the change in revenue are listed on this slide. We're reviewing the district's reserves and contingency budgets, district-supported leases, and continuing to scrub central office department budgets. Today we'll present to you some strategies for adjusting our annual pension obligation to further relieve pressure on the budgets. More impactful reductions, including to the ERP, employee contract days, and to the school-based allocations are also under consideration. Joining me today to discuss some of the alternatives to adjusting our funding strategy towards our pension application is Eric Atwater of Aon Consulting. While he makes his way up, I'll provide a bit of background for the APS pension plan. So, Board Member Briscoe Brown, I found our one-pager that we talked about. So we've incorporated some of the history of the plan here. Prior to 1979, employees of APS were covered under the City of Atlanta's General Employee Pension Plan. After this date, all APS-certified and some classified employees were given the option to shift from the General Employee Pension Plan to TRS. Approximately 60% chose this option. The shift left significant liability for previous employees without the corresponding new contributions from new employees. At the beginning of 2015, the pension plan was funded at 20%. At that time, the board passed a resolution to reduce the unfunded liability, amending the funding policy so that APS would contribute 48.8 million and increase its pension contributions 3% every year until the plan was fully funded. This revised schedule put APS on track to pay down its unfunded pension liability by FY29. At the last valuation date, FY24, the plan was nearly 60% funded. We paid 65.8 million in '25 and are currently budgeted at 67.8 million. The full funding period decreased from 4.2 to 3.3 years. Once the plan is fully funded, APS would only need to pay for benefits accrued during normal operations or about 4 million a year. Today, the purpose for today's conversation is to consider revising the funding policy to manage the costs to allow immediate budget relief while keeping the plan actuarially sound. They have prepared three alternative policies for us to review, which would be effective in the current FY26 year.
Alright, thank you. Again, my name is Eric Atwater, I'm a partner with Aon, and we're the experts for the General Employee Pension Fund. As Dr. Bracken alluded to, I just want to show you historically where you've been. So about a decade ago, the plan was roughly 20% funded, meaning that for every dollar promised, you had roughly 20 cents available to pay those benefits. You put in this policy in place, in the last decade, you've gotten yourself almost a 60% fund. Basically, I mean, you've got 60 cents for every dollar promised. And, and that has led us to where we are now. If you didn't make this change probably a decade ago, you wouldn't have the flexibility to consider the alternative we're gonna talk about here. So what are you looking at ahead? Again, you put in this policy over a decade ago, you've really got three more years to continue paying those higher contributions before you fully fund the plan. Okay, and after that, you'll just pay for the benefits that employees are going to. So you're looking at this schedule here, the line graph is showing you the funded percentage. As you'll see roughly 20, FY29, you'll be roughly 100% funded. But you're looking at contribution of 68, and then 70 million before it drops down. So with that being said, we looked at a couple of options to, can you smooth that all over a certain period of time? One of the options was, what if you spread it out to FY30, I mean, 35? We looked at, what if you kept it to FY30? And then we looked at, what is the lowest minimum you could contribute on the Georgia? So, so the first alternative was, what if you spread it out to FY35? And we looked at this, what would level payment would you need to make? So if you roughly make 24 million every year for the next, you know, nine or 10 years, the plan would be fully funded. So, so this allows you to come off of those high contributions we showed you before, to get all the way to 24. The next alternative is, well, what if you just stretch it out to FY30? You've got to pay roughly 43 million, but if you put in that 43 million for the next four years, again, you'll be fully funded, and again, by the FY30. And then the last alternative, not necessarily recommended, but we wanted to show you this. This is if you contribute the minimum on the Georgia law. One thing that you notice here is that the funded percentage remains around 70% for over a decade. You'll make up all that ground like the last 10 years of that policy. So this policy kind of keeps you in place, but it doesn't allow you to make any progress for fully funding. So just to conclude, you've got a couple of options. If you want to continue with the FY30 date, you can pay roughly 43 million dollars for the next three or four years until you fully fund it. If you want to stretch it out a little bit longer, let's say 10 years, you can put in roughly 24. So with that being said, I'm gonna turn back over to Dr. Bracken.
Alrighty, so what the administration is recommending, or will be recommending, is Option 2. So based on the valuation, the option returns $25 million in FY26. It would return $27 million in FY27, still has the pension obligation fully funded by 2030. This relieves pressure on the current budget, it allows us to begin to real-time add funds back to the fund balance, better positions the district to weather potential economic downturn, and adds flexibility to the investments across strategic priorities in the next couple of years. We'll work to draft a resolution to bring to the board in September for action on this. However, that does not mean we would take our foot off the accelerator. So while the pension adjustment alone would solve our current year budgetary issues, we commit to going further to increase the long-term financial stability of the district and empowering the administration to continue making data-driven financial investments in alignment with the strategic plan. We'll continue to review all the budget reduction strategies listed here, and we'll be prepared to bring additional budget adjustments over the next few months to reflect that additional savings. With that, we can take any questions that you may have.
I'm gonna start down here. Cynthia Briscoe Brown, I'm sorry. Board Member Brooks. Okay, Jessica, I mean, Board Member Johnson, you want to start off?
I'm sure, I'll kick us off. Thank you so much, and for, for sharing the, the different options in this band. I guess my, my first just understanding, if there's no penalty, there's no additional cost, if we're just choosing to extend the timeline, correct?
That's correct. There is additional cost the longer you extend it. We've kind of talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, can you explain that?
Yeah, and I would say that's minor additional cost, just the longer it takes you to pay off something, there's interest has been earned. So I would use the word minor additional cost for extending that period.
Oh, sure, I guess we would love more.
Plus minor if we do that 30-year.
The 30, sure.
So that one looks substantially different, and you're extending it a year or two, it's gonna be really much.
Sure, and I guess in preparation for September, if we can have like what that dollar amount is or that number, that would be really helpful. I think my second question, if I'm looking at the potential gap closure measures, I'm seeing the ERP on here, and I know we had a lot of healthy conversations about that in previous budget conversations. Can you provide a little more context around that?
Yeah, so for sure, what we're able to do is return about $3 million in the current year's ERP budget. So Dr. Elia Henderson-Rosser has scrubbed her budget, she's brought forward to us some additional savings just in backfills, repurposing some of our contractors and versus our in-house staff. So we're able to save $3 million with no real impact to the strategy. Other things that we're at least reviewing is, is there a way to extend or step out some of the ERP into future years? But not off the table is looking at a pause and further, further extension. It's, I think, a more drastic strategy, but everything's back on the table at least for us to look at.
Thank you.
Board Member Brooks, do you have a question?
Thought I had some more time. Alright. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for laying out a multitude of options for us to review. Transparently, I think I probably have more interest in like the three-year plan and taking a look at that. But Board Member Johnson brought up a very valid point. If there's going to be an adjustment in the cost for us, it would be helpful to know how much the cost is, even if we consider it to be minimal. I think in everyday people money, what we consider to be minimal is like sticker shocking. And so, for us, we can kind of cavalierly talk about a million or $500,000, like it's small, and so I would like to have context around that. Can you help us to have some understanding as to why the CAV's commercial assessment is so drastically different than Fulton's?
So, my question is more around why does Fulton's look so different than the CAV's? So, the CAV is more in alignment with what we would expect to see. So, we, and with still seeing an increase in number of, let's pop back up here to this slide. So, with the increased number of building permits that are being issued for construction, with the fact that I can't walk down a street without running into scaffolding.
Right.
It is alarming that we don't see more value or a greater increase in the City of Atlanta in the Fulton Digest. The CAV looks more like what I would have expected. To be completely transparent, I thought it was being conservative with my 5% commercial growth, so this was really surprising. What it really, when we dig into it though, and I will tell you, my team looked property by property. A lot of it is coming out in the appeals. So, what we do know is commercial properties have more ability to appeal, just appeal as a standard practice. And what we don't know is how rigorous that appeal process is in getting those appeals approved. So, if there is an opportunity to appeal and just have that go through, I don't know why they wouldn't take advantage of that, and it looks like they are. And so, appeals, again, $31 million of our value was lost to that. The undervaluation, I think, is a more complex issue, but since I walked in the doors here, we've had certain community groups that have been lifting to us that concern. We've even had, you know, some of our residents come during the homestead exemption conversations last year who had done their own homework, just looking at their square footage and the value of their square footage against the commercial properties next door. So, I don't have a great answer for that, but I think it is something we can continue to poke at.
I'm so grateful that you named the appeals process. My understanding is that that is housed under the Fulton County Tax Assessor's Office and that there's some very interesting things to learn about the appeals process and how it works and why it's working out the way it is. I guess my question to you is, what could we be doing on our side as a board? Either in the political streets or whatever streets we need to be in, to be advocating for a change in this process, to advocate for more rigor, to advocate, like, is it a timeline thing? Is it a rigor thing? Is it a, they get three years before they're reassessed so they're able to pay taxes? You know, can we get a little education on how we could advocate on our side to better improve this for, because the city's getting hurt by this. We're getting hurt by this. The county's getting, everybody's getting hurt by it. So, what can we do?
I think there's a couple of things. I think that one step you guys took last year as part of the legislative process was to see how more of these bills can take into account that offsetting commercial value. So, I think even the Homestead Exemption Bill, House Bill 581, that was including the residential cap, included some language too about getting commercial more fairly assessed. And so, we want to see more legislation like that, that's making sure that any time that we are trying to give relief to homeowners, that we assume a corresponding press to make sure the commercial is paying its fair share. The other thing that, you know, I talk about abatements here, but we didn't list how much of our revenue goes to TADS, to other development authorities or development initiatives in Atlanta. That's two to three mils' worth of our millage every year does not come to us. It gets collected and reinvested in those TADS. And I think there will be opportunity for this board to have additional conversation about how we support development in Atlanta going forward and being very strategic about, as we make decisions around where our revenue goes. It is a decision that has a corresponding impact on where our expenditures can go against our strategic priorities in the district, right? So, every dollar we don't take here, we're not able to spend here, so we just have to think about that as we are making those decisions.
My last ask is on the conversation around the TADS. Dr. Johnson, if we could potentially get some information on how many of our families, our students are positively impacted by the TADS, right? So, if we're supporting a TAD somewhere, how many of our students are living in that area? I would really like, as we're going into this conversation around TADS, I want to be able to look some of our friends in these Atlanta streets in the eye directly and be able to say I'm a yes or a no to something on the basis of what impact it is having for our families.
We can actually get that, I think we get that information.
Thank you.
Board Member Zaff, anyone else?
Thank you, Dr. Bracken, and to Board Member Brooks' comment, exactly right on the TAD investment is something that Invest Atlanta has to show us because we are 52% investor. If it's an instructional strategy, then let's see how it impacts our kids. So, amen to that. The, I, a question about the proper, or the, if we're going to, if we're going to break the pension piggy bank and fill in a budget gap, which I think, I understand if there's some wisdom to that, can we do that after we do the reconciliations that you've listed on this slide right here? Can we ask ourselves those hard questions? You just lost it.
I'm going to the one that's got the money on it, the pension.
No, this slide right here. So, my thought, and maybe this is, maybe I just misheard the sequence, but before we make the vote on the resolution for how much we need to fill, what gap we need to fill, if we've done after, if we've done all the, and you know, we don't want to cut bone. We want to make sure we're just cutting fat, but if, if, and fat, I shouldn't have said that, that's glib. I know these are very difficult decisions, but if we can, if we can go through that thorough process and then decide, okay, this is how short we are versus starting with, hey, let's take here and then.
No, we're doing all of it, and so even tonight, we're bringing to you a budget adjustment of 22 million. I will be loading a negative 22 million in my budget, which is the accountability for me. I have to close that gap. We're doing that strategically, so you'll see some additional central office reductions come to you tonight as part of the personnel adoption that you'll be doing. Every time we abolish a position, we are sweeping the funds and it's offsetting that 22 million. So, it won't happen overnight, but we're strategically, over the next couple of months, we'll be having conversations. And as we're closing that gap, that will go towards that 10 million, and the central office will sweep that over. The district leases, we are scrubbing that now, sweeping that over to offset that 22 million. This pension will go to offset that 22 million, so now I've got a positive, right? But you adopted a budget this year that used 10 million of fund balance. So, my goal is that by the end of all of that, I've got 35, 40, 45 million in that district-wide line item, and I'm bringing you a budget adjustment at mid-year that's saying I no longer need to use fund balance. I'm returning this 25 million or 45 million to the district. So, we're going against all of these strategies. I don't know that we'll have all of them fully baked by September, but we will at least have closed the gap and will continue to work towards closing next year's gap before we even start the budgeting process for next year.
Yeah, and I would just say, just to echo, so that was, we literally had this conversation a few hours ago, and the last push was, this isn't, we don't see this as the lever to balance the budget. This is a lever that we should probably look at strategically, but not the lever to balance the budget. We're going to make the hard decisions. It's unfortunate that we're here, if I'm just being frank, I'm quite frustrated by us being here, and I've been clear about that. Like, you know, we're here. And so, you know, we've got to cut, in effect, 120-plus million dollars from the budget this cycle. And so, you know, nobody anticipated the commercial index being where it is, but here it is. So, we will navigate that. The other thing I will point to is, if you refer to the chart here, some of these things are stepped in. So, you see some things that we can do year one, like we're not going to pull back small school supplement tomorrow on schools, right? Kids got to show up, but we know that that's something that we've got to look at. We'll look at calendars, like, and where we've had great energy, the thing, like, we talked about a little bit, but the thing that I don't know is talking about broadly, but we need to just lay in the middle of the table in the room as we do these conversations is, nobody really knows where this economy is going to be over the next year or two, quite frankly. And so, the energy we have when we sit at the table and begin to have this conversation, and the reason why we brought you a multi-option, multi-year strategy, frankly, is because we want to get out in front of, we're not just solving for this year's budget. We believe, I believe, we're solving for, we're trying to find some solves. I'm not saying this is going to solve because we might have to go deeper once we get to next year, but we're trying to solve for what we fully anticipate potentially being a multi-year challenge from a budgetary standpoint. And so, if the commercial was down this year, there's, I don't have a lot of confidence that it's all of a sudden going to come back up next year, you know? And so, we're trying to solve for this gap over multiple years, and so that's how we start to look at this option. So, to answer your question, yeah, we're going to do the hard things. We all are committed to that. But we know this is a lever that begins to make sense. I also would be remiss, and I won't have a lot of mic in this conversation, but the work that's been done over the last several years around the pension that positioned us for this moment to take a step back and say, what's the most strategic thing to do to position us that by 2030, we can step back and say, okay, you know, we're in a really, really, really good spot. But if that work had not, had it not been for that work, we would not be in this spot.
I appreciate that, and thanks to previous boards for making, and for previous district leadership for putting us in that position. I just want to conclude with the last thing is just this, you've put the breadcrumbs down about the commercial appraisals. You've heard this board has a lot of energy around this. I have constituents that have a lot of energy around this, and the, because the other side of this is, the bills have to get paid, and so we end up leaning on our residential property owners. So, it's not just, oh, that commercial's not paying, it ends up falling to the folks that can least afford it. And there are property after property after property, and you and I have talked about this, that have been sold for $400 million and appraised for $250 million. And, you know, because we're being outlawed and we're being outrepresented in these courtrooms. And so, I look to Ms. Long and to you all to give us a strategy, you know, as Board Member Brooks said, like, tell us what we can do. And it might be, it might be all of the above. I think the city has energy around this. Certain Fulton County schools certainly has energy around this. They're in this number two. So, we just have to get this story out, that this isn't just, we're an anti-business, we're not anti-business, we're pro homeowner, we're pro Atlantans. And so, if you can help us build that strategy, I think you'll find a lot of willing supporters here. Thank you.
I'll tag on to that and say I included something in my newsletter about this very issue, and I got a lot of feedback. And there is more public pressure being put on, and I appreciate folks doing that on the ground because Ken's exactly right. We know single-family homeowners are shouldering most of the burden. And the city absolutely has energy, and everyone has to come together and really put that pressure on Fulton County, as do their constituents. So, we'll continue that, but to Dr. Johnson's point, I'm thinking, as I know we all are, about the future and the economic situation. Like, even if Fulton County were to change overnight, which isn't going to happen, they do have a new assessor, and you can reach out to your Fulton County Commissioners on this too, guys. C1 is, there's a huge, there's an undervaluation there. And then some of these smaller commercial properties could actually have less value. Like, we're stepping into some, we don't know. So, I appreciate the thought and focus around the presentation. It's really good to hear my colleagues' questions and Dr. Johnson, what you just shared. I also really appreciate the board that took the step and the leadership because we would not be in this position, obviously, to even have this choice. But I'm glad Ken brought up and pushing again, like, can we really look at everything? But we've also made so many changes in CLL, which were the right ones, but there's a lot happening in that. So, just us being aware of that, but also looking at all the options very closely to make sure we don't undermine progress and obviously focus very much on students. And with the small school supplement, knowing that has to be a gradual process, but also we haven't seen, there is outcomes that we need to really be focused on outcomes across. It's not just, we're just taking these things to be, but really making sure we're using that money in an even more effective manner. So, I appreciate the information you shared today, but I'm glad you're going to be looking very closely continually and bringing back to us, you know, how it's looking. But yeah, to everyone, including everyone listening, please, 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 take very seriously what the reality is for us when commercial property is under assessed and appeals. And then, TADS, I'm with my colleagues, we need to really think about the future and where we are right now. So, thank you. Board Member Briscoe Brown.
Thank you, and thank you, Lisa and your team, all of you, for the really deep and thoughtful work that you have done of this. As, I think the only person left who actually was part of this back in 2015, I want to say that we had to come up with this strategy because 30 years of boards before us had failed to do so, had kicked that can down the road, had said we have other things to do with our money, and in the process, we were shortchanging our employees. I want to give a shout out to our former colleague and now State Senator Jason Estvez, who led this charge, who drove this in the face of some significant opposition at the time. This was a hard pill to swallow. And I have, we committed then as a group that we would do everything in our power to protect these payments until we finished making them. I do think, and I never thought I would say this, because we made that commitment, knowing that it would be difficult in the future. But I do think that the leveling out over the next two or three years to extend it a year is a good plan. I think it balances the need to close out this problem once and for all with our need to take care of our kids and our employees and our families. So, it has my support, and because you hear me ask the question every year, I also appreciate that it has the potential for returning funds to the fund balance, which I do think is going to be extremely important over the next few years. I'm, I think we're all concerned about what's going to happen to our national economy and our state economy. So, we need that cushion. I'm deeply impressed by how you and your team have managed to balance all of those competing and in some cases mutually exclusive priorities, and really appreciate that. And I look forward to discussing this further and then voting on it in September.
Thank you, Dr. Bracken, thank you, Aon. All right, Dr. Bradshaw rounding the bend. This has been a robust session, so we will take note. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Board Chair, Board Vice Chair, Member of the Board, Dr. Johnson. I will cover the process we are following for our long-range facilities plan. I will also provide you an update, kind of, number one, where have we been? Number two, where are we now? Number three, where are we going? This attempt of this long-range facilities plan is to make sure that we maximize the usage of our facilities for student and community good. Recently, the Atlanta Public Schools adopted a new strategic plan. If you look at that belief statement, we are a community of believers, but we must get back to the basics. So, kind of in that frame of getting back to the basics, number one, we must first determine how efficiently and effectively we are currently utilizing our current resources. Are we maximizing facility usage for student and community good? The state gives us a parameters for the size of schools, and we use that guidance in our decision-making, as well as they give us parameters on how we can save money for capital improvements and how we can maximize our savings. With that being said, um, the question is, are we maximizing our facility usage? Um, in order to answer that question, we must establish what we call a success expectation or success criteria. If you'll look at the third bullet from the top, um, these questions we should be able to answer. Can we increase our quality programming opportunities for all students in Atlanta, in Atlanta Public Schools? Number two, can we decrease the number of unactivated properties? Number three, can we increase the number of community hubs? Number four, can we narrow the per pupil spin between our highest and lowest schools? And if the answer is yes, meaning if we can do those things, then we must follow this strategy of number one, um, undergoing a comprehensive facilities plan. And number two, uh, we must involve the community. We don't want to take action without hearing from our community, hearing from our teachers, even hearing from our students. We've already done that with our teacher advisory council, getting their input in this as well. Where have we been? I know this appears to be a new topic, but I've done some research. Back in 2011, 2012, and I won't cover every, this is a very, very busy slide, but Atlanta Public Schools, um, embarked upon a major district-wide rezoning. And as you go across 2013, 14, um, we took a look at middle school boundary changes. 2015, 16, we looked at the turnaround concept. 2017, 18 closures, consolidations, 2019, new master plan initiated. And to be honest, in 2020, 2021, things kind of went on pause due to COVID. And since that time, there hasn't been a robust discussion until now. And that's why we're kind of picking up where we left off in 2020. Now, we do understand that there was a company prior to HPM that worked closely with Atlanta Public Schools with this new administration. We, um, engaged with HPM, but we're using that same data that was presented there. And we're combining both HPM and Sizmore data. And we're getting the information we need to kind of construct the direction where we're going. Where have we been continued? Um, after COVID, we've kind of been in a five-year, um, kind of research and planning and just developing a plan and a strategy. And this is what we call the planning phase. We're going to continue gathering data, um, so that we can make an informed decision. But I do want to emphasize what's going to be key is community engagement. And we understand that, um, that communities will posture because I, and I tell everyone, even the school principals, you should love and support your school. You should. But as we look at what we just discussed with the budget, its implications with student achievement that was mentioned today, how can we take all of this and bundle it up into a nice, comprehensive plan that will move this system forward? Where are we now? I tell everyone, uh, this plan is a 10 to 15-year plan, um, and I call that the high beams. You got to turn on the high beams to see where are we going? We're looking at the implications with the, um, what's going on with the economy across our country. Um, but you also have to turn on the low beams, which is a three to five-year plan that will guide us to a 10 to 15-year plan. With that, looking at number two, we, um, got the support of HPM, a K-12 planner. You go around, we published a state of schools report. We've already started community task force meetings. We've held one public meeting. Um, we have a community survey. But there's a lot of work to be done before any final decision is made. And I want to reemphasize that. The reason you typically get a third party is you don't want any bias from anyone who works in a district. So they give you the data that's clean. And then the community gets input and then that's how you, um, determine what direction you should go. So I do want to say the goal is to be transparent and provide this information to all of the, um, stakeholders so that even the final plan, we may not agree, but we want to at least say that we understood the process. Again, um, I'm going to reemphasize community task force, um, options. In about a week, we're going to start developing some options. And I say we, the, um, K-12 planner. But I do want to say that, um, even when you take a look at the options, that's still the early, early process. No decisions will be made. If schools or framework has been identified, we're kind of what's the best course of action. No decisions will be made until we go into the communities and hear directly from those that will possibly be impacted. I do want to say, um, where are we going? The goal is to improve student and community outcomes district-wide. Let me repeat. We know that there's pockets of success in APS and there are actually pockets where we have schools that are struggling. The goal is, is to improve student outcomes district-wide. And we have a strategic plan and within that strategic plan, we've identified that we must engage in a long-range facilities plan. And the plan will provide simply a pathway on how to get there. In order to increase student achievement and community outcomes, we must continue to focus on the hubs, um, eliminate blight. We've heard that in the community, um, increase green space, um, increase learning, early learning opportunities. We've heard loud and clear from the community of historic preservation, ban career tech, affordable housing with the mayor's office and workforce development. This is just one example of, um, David Mitchell, Executive Director of Atlanta Preservation Center. This is a new news article. We've had a decommissioned school, Lakewood Elementary. The school is going to be revamped into mixed use with retail and affordable housing units. This is just one example of the direction that we would like to go, working closely with the city government officials. And kind of wrapping up, um, we have some upcoming events. This is just a flyer that we made available of the upcoming events with, um, both English and Spanish. If, um, you have suggestions or ideas that we can make this process even more transparent, we're open. Um, we know that this will be a challenging process, but we hope that we share with you the, um, the rationale so that we can try to get everyone on board so that we can make, continue to make APS one district. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Vice Chair McDonald. Okay. Board member Brooks, are you ready? Board member Briscoe Brown? Okay. Okay.
Thank you for this. I, I do want to point out that I don't believe we voted on that Lakewood plan yet, so.
Not yet.
Yeah, I'm not.
Yet.
Yeah, so. Right. Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make that clear to the public. I see on your, your timeline, and thank you for this timeline, by the way, that understanding the, the different, uh, efforts that have been made and the changes that have been made over the years, I think is important as we go forward. I know that you, you, you have a spot here that says charter schools closed in the last 15 years. But we don't talk about how many have been opened in the last 15 years. Well, all of those are not charter schools. Some of them are partner schools. Slater Price, Gideon's, Harbor Steam, Woodson Park. Anyway. When, because we are, my, all of this is probably a side conversation to the, to the question I really need to ask, which is on the timeline, we are beginning to get a lot of commentary from the community. And much of it concerns specific schools, which certain members of our community believe have already been decided to be closed. Can you give us a timeline for when those become more specific so that the community doesn't get excited unnecessarily?
Yes, ma'am. The goal was to first provide the framework. And then the, from the framework, then some schools would be identified after the framework. The identification of those schools are now, now coming out. As we continue to hear from the public, then we'll go out to the potentially impacted communities, schools, and then have those meetings. But no decision has been made yet. That's why we haven't, um, gone out to any particular communities at this point.
To repeat, no decision has been made yet.
No, ma'am.
All right.
One point of clarity though, I think next, at some point next week, hoping to, at, at initial look of considerations, though, right?
Yes, that is correct. Next week on, um, the week of the 18th, August 25th, the framework should be kind of, um, narrowed down to first flush of schools that could possibly be impacted. And then more data would be gathered from there.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bradshaw, uh, for your, your presentation. Thank you also for the timeline, right? I, I remember being a, uh, pre-K parent back in those 21, 2012 days. And just remember the conversations that were happening, especially on my side of town where, uh, I live. My son at the time was actually attending Eastlake Elementary, which is no longer a school. And I now live, uh, close by Benteen Elementary. Are there any guardrail statements that we could make today that might help to, uh, ease some unnecessary anxieties in particular communities? I.e., this might not, this will not happen, or this will not happen. Are there any guardrail statements that we can make that folks who are float, uh, my DMs and emails and text threads are bumping with people believing certain scenarios are on the table? So I'm just wanting to know, is there anything that we could say today, um, that might put to ease some of those, uh, concerns?
Well, I would say that, um, the goal is not to disrupt the high school cluster model. That's, these are goals. I would hate to stake what, what's not going to happen and then.
Something different happens.
And then something is flushed out in the next few weeks that sent us in a different direction.
Can we maybe say our intention? Is that fair?
Yes, the intention of not to, um, tinker with the high school cluster model. The goal is not to have this first round, major overhauls and boundary changes. But as we try to become more efficient as a district, sometimes the conversation, um, could change. So that's why we want to be very careful that all of that is taken in consideration without kind of putting the stake in the ground on what's not going to happen. And then information, um, kind of pushes us in a different direction.
Thank you.
So first of all, thank you. We can appreciate that it's not a simple process. You said two things I think that are worth repeating. One, the community engagement. We could say this all day long, or we know this, we live in these communities. These children are coming in now, we have lots of parents approaching us. So I think, you know, change is very scary. And the best way to offset that is something else you said about, like, we have to be so transparent, so clear about what we're doing. And I've always firmly believed I do not have to agree with you, but I do have to understand how that conclusion was reached. And so I think that will help us. So I appreciate that you're just front-loading that. Because there are just so many concerns and unfortunately these rumors and then people believe they heard something about a school closing. So, you know, I had former board members texting me while I was on vacation, asking me what's happening. And I think we just want to, as clear as we can be. But I appreciate that also, we aren't to say what we can and can't do right now. We're still in the process of going through it. So thank you for entertaining that question, but also that's not, we don't want to do that. We don't want to say anything definitive right now because we're, we're trying to learn and, and we want the community engagement. So I appreciate that. And then just a quick segue to Dr. Howe, Dr. Butler, Dr. Bracken, Dr. Bradshaw, there's such a tongue twister, Chief Usher and Ms. Lester. I just want to say, this is the best set of presentations I've probably seen since I've been on the board. I have probably sat through 200 presentations. That is a wonderful opportunity. But the concision, the way you are delivering information tonight, the way that it looks, um, I already sent Dr. Johnson a note, but it is like, I can, we got a whole different vibe in the school year. And so I recognize it. We have given feedback for some time to prior administration about the tightness of the info. Like this is executive level amazing presentation, not just on paper, but how you're presenting the data tonight. And I'm so appreciative because when you say five presentations, we get nervous. Cause that's so much words and presentations. But thank you for the unbelievable, like you have all just brought this up a level as we launch into school year. And I've noted it and I am incredibly appreciative of it.
Just, uh, totally, totally agree with, with Vice Chair McDonald has said that, that everyone has done a terrific job. And thank you, Dr. Johnson, for your, for modeling and for, for, um, yeah, we, five presentations and we're going to get done before five, most likely. I mean, that's, 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 uh, and I'm not going to be a part of us not getting it done before five. Said, said every board member, right? My, my question is, and I, just to lift up what something that, that Jen said, that, you know, we can question the outcome. We should never question the process. What, what is the conclusion? Just say, give us a little bit of guidance on what, where does the community task force go? So they're, they're meeting for the next couple of months. What's the conclusion of that process? It's not an up or down vote, but what, what, what's the last meeting look like of the community task force?
Um, the last meeting should be, um, getting together with the task force to kind of compare notes. You hear what's going on in the community. And we will actually, um, go into the community, but there's still, um, task force members that have deep connections with, uh, many of these schools, many of the, um, people who have lived in these communities. So just a comparing note before we make a final decision.
Real quick, um, adding on to that, on the flyer, I've been lifting up to folks and thank you for the flyer. I've gotten some good feedback about the information that was sent out recently that's really clear, that the consultants will come to the community, that that can be requested. Can you provide a little more about how folks make that request?
Yes, ma'am. Once, um, the list, um, I don't really like using the term a list, but the schools that have been identified that could possibly be impacted, then those will be the schools that we will go out to the community and we'll, um, work with the school administration on dates, what would be best. But that's normally would be the next sequence to, to these events.
I've encouraged people to wait until after the 18th, 25th, or maybe 18th. And then they can make that request based on what is present.
Thank you. I have one question and it's about communication. So I see that we have this lovely one sheet that has all of these dates on here on how you can engage. My question is, what is the plan on reaching our parents who are not traditionally plugged in? Because we want their input and engagement as well. So are there any grassroots or, um, non-traditional communications that you have planned to make sure that you reach those voices?
Number one, I would say we're open to suggestions because it is difficult, um, to engage people who typically are not engaged. But we're going to have it online. Every meeting will also be, um, a virtual meeting, even when we go out to the community. We'll try to develop a strong relationship with school principal. Even if we have to get to those PTAs or whatever we need to do to kind of get the attention of every impacted school, that's going to be key.
I encourage, uh, offline activities. Not everyone has a, a lot of minutes and connectivity, even though we do provide some of those things. So I, um, I am requesting that we be intentional about hand-to-hand, face-to-face communications and engaging some of our more vulnerable parents and families.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just want to, I, thank you, Dr. Bradshaw. I want to be really, really clear. This will be a challenging process. And, um, I think Dr. Bradshaw said something about, um, the final plan, we may not agree on. I will assure you that the final plan will not be agreed on by, by everybody. And, and the final recommendation. I will say that we've talked a lot about, and even in the process of this, I think we talk a lot about what's been taken away. I also think it's a real opportunity to talk about what could be. I've spent a year and a week in a deficit financially, and I am looking forward to having, and I got a lot of ideas. You see how large my head is? It's not because I'm confident. I got a lot of ideas. And I would love to execute on some things, but you got to have some money. And right now, we can't execute on much of anything outside of doing our day-to-day, which our day-to-day is pretty good. Here's the other thing, and I'll just speak very transparently, like, you know, the truth of the matter is, we are reaching a point, and I just want to speak real talk to APS. We're reaching a point from a budgetary standpoint where we've made reductions to CLL this cycle. We're going to make more reductions to CLL. We're, you know, if we are so fortunate, we'll be able to do a little bit of an extension to the pension. We've pulled about every lever at the district office before you start to erode what the school experience looks like and feels like for students. And we want to guard, and we are guarding against that, like, you know, just with everything we've got, every fiber of our being. The other piece I will speak to, to be really, really honest, is, you know, some of the, some of the, the idea behind the small school experience is awesome when you can offer all the things that you want to offer. But in some instances, folks are having to make really difficult decisions about, you know, a full-time librarian, a full-time counselor, a full-time social worker, or a half-time, or a third, or maybe not even any. And so I think it should start to look, as I've seen some of this data shared, it makes you take a step back. So again, I know we entered this conversation, everybody starts this conversation about what's being taken away, but I really want to talk about the opportunity we have to lean in and to provide a more robust experience for our students. When I think about the budget that we have and the number of students that we have, my goodness, we ought to be able to really do some transformational things. And so as challenging as this conversation is, I don't know if there's any superintendent that looks forward to this type of conversation. I'm willing to go through it if we can see the things on the other side. And I think it's the things on the other side that make us willing to lean into this conversation and to see what's on the horizon potentially for our district. So I'd be remiss to say, like, we know it's going to be challenging, but probably a necessary one, for sure.
Well, there's no further questions. Thank you, everyone, for your reports. Madam General Counsel, is there a reason for the board to retreat into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, the board needs to discuss real estate and legal matters.
Right, is there a motion to enter an executive session to discuss real estate and legal matters?
So moved.
Second. Boardman Briscoe Brown, second by Boardmember Totem Pace. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.